The whole meeting for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three is hereby called to order. The clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas. Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Demal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Sivell.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bede.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Alderman Yamas requests permission to participate remotely per section two dash eight zero based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. This has been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December fifth, twenty twenty-three? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Mahalo?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, under the mayor's report, we have a number of presentations, and one, I will ask the mayor to come down to the center. One is for the retirement of someone that we know exceptionally well. His name is synonymous with Aurora, as our tagline in the city of lights, as he prepares to retire from the Fox Valley Park District. We bid him farewell. We can give a round of applause to Mr. Jim Pilmer. We're going to ask the mayor to join us in Alex Alexandru, and after the mayor does a presentation, Alex has some remarks.
Well, it's my absolute honor to be here today reading this proclamation. And although it's a day of celebration and congratulations to Mr. Pilmer on his retirement and moving on to next phase in, in, in his career, in his life, it's a sad day for us here in the city of Aurora, whether you, when you started out in the city of Aurora years ago and moved on to the park district. You know, we always remember and, and know and love Jim Pilmer for the service that he's given to our community. With that, I'll read the proclamation for Jim Pilmer Day, October twenty, October twenty-second. Whereas Jim Pilmer is a lifelong Auroraan and a graduate of West Aurora High School, we won't hold that against you, Wobonzie Community College, Eastern Illinois University, Aurora University, and John Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. And whereas Jim has enjoyed a career spanning nearly three decades serving the Aurora community and the public sector, including the public service career from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty fifteen as an apartment head at Aurora City Hall, and has elected offices for twenty-four years as a trustee at Wobonzie Community College, and four years as Aurora Township trustee. And whereas on November ninth, twenty fifteen, Jim Pilmer became the sixth executive director of the Fox Valley Park District, serving two hundred and thirty-three thousand residents in a sixty-five square mile legislative boundary. And whereas Jim prepares to retire from the park district, it is evident that he has left the organization in a more stable, equitable, and inclusive place with consistent quality programming, events, and services to district residents and visitors. Now therefore, I, Mayor Rich C. Irvin, do hereby acknowledge Jim Pilmer's stellar career in public service, and do hereby proclaim his birthday, October twenty-second, as Jim Pilmer Day here in the city of Aurora from this point forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Let me just say a few words about my good friend Jim Pilmer. Twenty-three years ago, Jim was pretty close to the first person I ran into on a professional basis, working for the city. I, I came here as the city's first risk manager, and so one of my jobs was to go around the city and talk to different departments and get a feel for what they did and evaluate. And so Jim, at the time, part of his responsibility was overseeing downtown services and downtown special events. And so in talking to Jim, you, those of you who know him, you don't usually get a yes or no answer out of him, but every question I asked him was a yes, no, yes, no. Finally, I said, Jim, you do realize we're on the same team. I work for the city. And he goes, what? I thought you were an insurance auditor. That's why I was giving you the closed book. So it started from there, and I can truly say, and, and, you know, they talk about your work family, your real family, and sometimes the two cross. Well, I'm proud to say that Jim and his wonderful family have become very close and dear friends of mine. We not only were colleagues for a long time here at the city, but I had the honor and privilege of serving as a commissioner for the Fox Valley Park District, seeing Jim's work firsthand and his love of parks, his love of public service. So they talk about servant leaders and servant leadership. Jim Pilmer embodies the true spirit of a servant leader, serving others and doing what we all strive to do, whether it's in business or government, whether you're a journalist, whether you're a development lawyer or a developer. We all want to leave our mark and leave our place of business better than when we found it. And I can tell you, everywhere Jim's been, he left the place better than he started. And that includes the city, park district, AU, his tremendous lifelong love and service at Wobonzie. So we will miss Jim, but I know he will not be far. And I know that, you know, maybe I'll get invited to his podcast in northern Wisconsin. I, I'm not sure if I'll be allowed in the podcast. So Jim, thank you, love you, and congratulations.
I just take a moment and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alex. And, you know, I have a thousand people I could thank. Many are in this room. I've got a thousand stories of working in the community, all of them good. Mayor Dave Stover brought me to the city, worked under Mayor Tom Weisner, and Mayor Tom Weisner and I came up with an idea to redevelop McCarty Park, but there was a young state's attorney prosecutor up at the Aurora Branch Court named Richard Irvin, who was spending a lot of time out there trying to rehabilitate, and we're like, wait a minute, let's change the environment. And Mayor Irvin, at that time, with Pamela Bradley, and I could go on with the people that have influenced me to stand me up, to be able to do what I can go do. There's two people not here tonight. I've enjoyed every one of the members of City Council to work with. Sir, I haven't met you yet, but I know of you. But there's two people that, when I was a city staffer and then continued at the park district, that always was with me, and that's Shakita Hart Burns and Alderman Robert J. O'Connor, the contrarian who taught me to present and come to finance committee and put your information in there, create a culture of evidence, and it'll go through. And then Shakita, I have to laugh. I mean, my workday starts at five and ends at eight, and hers starts at nine-thirty, ten in the morning, goes till ten. So Shakita, I loved her, as that she'd be my first call in the morning to get back to her. But those two individuals had a huge impact on my public service life here at the city of Aurora also. Thank you all. I love this community of Aurora. I'm not going away. I'm very interested in the gentlemen that are presenting tonight. It's a couple blocks from my home. It'll be, it's actually on my paper out. I started when I was in third grade, so I'm planning on staying here in Aurora and, and, and watching closely. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Another big round of applause for Jim Pilmer.
Thank you, Mr. Pilmer.
Servant leader here in the city of Aurora.
He definitely will be missed, Mr. Pilmer. Speaking of someone who will be missed, tonight, we also bid farewell. He's not retiring. He's been promoted to our sergeant-at-arms here, who's been holding it down here in City Council chambers for a number of years, who now moves on to become a sergeant. Round of applause for Officer Sullivan.
Now, I'm going to read a name here. Officer William Sullivan. We affectionately call him Sully. So this mayor's award of excellence is honored presented to Sully, Officer William Sullivan, for serving as sergeant-at-arms of the Aurora City Council with the utmost commitment to safety, professionalism, and fairness. Congratulations on your promotion, brother, and best wishes to your future. You know you're going to do as proud as a sergeant at APD, my brother.
Before we ask Sully to say a few words, we have another presentation for him.
Oh, wow.
Signed by all your fans here at City Hall. We appreciate you. Congratulations.
Wow. Let's give Sully a round of applause.
There's not much to say. I, you know, I really appreciate my command staff and supervisory staff for giving me the opportunity to work in this position and try to excel the best that I possibly could. But at the end of the day, I'm one of three hundred cogs in the machine, and I know that all my brothers and sisters would have stepped up just as much. So I just really appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you folks, and I've learned a lot in here, and I'll take it with me. I've made some lifelong friends, and I truly appreciate the position that I was put in. So thank you so much.
Thanks, brother. And as we prepare to conclude this last meeting before the holidays, we want to welcome our newest member of Aurora City Council family, Ms. Eleanor Olivia Yamas. Alderman Yamas' daughter was born. So we welcome Eleanor Olivia to the world. And congratulations to you, Alderman. I know you're listening to the first lady of the First Ward, Jasmine, as well. So, thank you.
Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the committee of the whole for up to three minutes with the maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the committee of the whole shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Please read the name of the first speaker wishing to offer public comment.
Adam Pauly.
Sir Pauly, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Thanks, everybody. Unfortunately, due to some personal and medical issues that arose, I will not be appearing on the ballot for recorder in the twenty twenty-four election. I want to thank everybody who helped out with that, and I will be proudly supporting Brenda Rogers, who will be very good in that position. Former Elgin City Councilwoman, a relater for more than thirty years, she will be able to competently carry out the duties of that office with the best of her ability. She also believes very strongly in the civility and decency, as I do. She is the only candidate in that field who has committed to signing a civility pledge and who did not reach down to the level of mudslinging and nastiness as the other candidates did. I will be proudly supporting her, and I encourage you to do the same. I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you call the next speaker?
Sandy Schmidt.
Ms. Schmidt, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hi, I'm Sandy Schmidt. I am a Ward Five resident since two thousand and five. I'm here today to talk about the Prairie subdivision proposal. I attended the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee on December thirteenth, and I live within a mile of that proposed site. And so I do have a few issues that came up that concerned me. So that would be in reference to two-three dash zero-nine-seven-six and two-three dash zero-nine-seven-seven. I actually came up with a few things, but then, as I Googled Nar Corporation last night, I found that there were four class action lawsuits against them. So I gave City Council what I'm speaking on right now, and I also have, from the meeting last week, I did go through and put some timestamps on some of the things I'm speaking about today. So this would be on the YouTube video. So as I said, they have four class actions. I think the Arizona one had been settled, but it was for, one was for breach of data, and then there are three that I could find that were about misleading information compared from the spec homes to the actual homes that were purchased, and that there were poor quality, some needing major repairs, costing homeowners time and money. And that would be in Florida, Arizona, and California. So I think my main concern with all of this is that traffic and the traffic flow does not seem to be adequately addressed. For instance, there were, let's see, the, the city engineer, and I'm not sure of his name because I'm not sure if he either said it or it wasn't recorded on the video. But the question was asked several times, like, how would the traffic on Prairie Street be addressed? And his answer was, not sure how it would be addressed, could be two lanes or three lanes and have a median. He called one of the lanes the suicide turn lane. So that kind of concerns me that at this point, there, there hasn't been an address as far as who also would be paying for some of that. Let's see. There was a discussion about areas needing improvements like curbs and sidewalks, so like outside of the subdivision on King's Way, I believe Kennelworth, there was some discussion on that, and there's no answer as to who would be paying for that. There's also flooding issues that haven't been completely addressed, and the people that already live on the south side of Prairie, I'm not sure if they've been asked or if their properties have been assessed. So just ask that, here's some things that I feel like are a concern for Ward Five, and I would appreciate a little bit of consideration, especially for the traffic issue. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
George Gutierrez.
Just Gutierrez, you have three minutes to speak beginning now.
Hello. I was here last week speaking on an issue, and I'm here to talk about the same issue again, as I wasn't able to complete what I was saying. So I'll give you a brief summary of what took place. My name is Chicano George Gutierrez. I do a lot of events here in Aurora. One of my day-of-the-day events, cultural event, was messed with, and I had to cancel it here downtown. Special events kicked off a series of events where the APD officers went and to the business where I was supposed to do the event, told them to not allow me to do it. We moved it to another location. They told them to not allow me to do it. They ended up shutting it down. After that, I run a boxing club, which we scheduled an event for the kids to try to acquire a building. That event, the owner was approached by members of the APD and was told not to allow us to have the event there. And I understand if, you know, I do a lot of speaking up in the city of Aurora. I've had a number of successful events without any issues or problems. I'm always trying to support the community. I understand if they want to attack me, that's okay. You know, I just have to deal with that. When it comes to the kids, attacking the kids, trying to cancel an event, that all we're doing is trying to keep them off the streets and acquire a building for them so that way, you know, they can train and do something positive. You know, that's really crossing the line. And so I'm here to, you know, ask if we can set up some type of meetings with whoever it may concern, whether it be special events, APD, the mayor's office, to try to remedy this. Because one thing is that, as I continue to try to do these events, they keep sabotaging me, tarnishing my reputation, intimidating these businesses, because the fifth third bank, they told me approximately six officers went in there to tell them not to allow me to have the event. Tako morbi, four officers showed up there, as well as the gang unit harassing people there. I've never had a gang issue since I've been out here doing these events. Two days before our event, once we were told that we can do the event, three squad cars showed up at La Sierra where we're doing the boxing club event and told, you know, were unpleasant, you know, for them allowing me to do the event. So I'm just here to ask for, like I said, try to remedy the situation. As you all know, I always say that I'm not against the city of Aurora, I'm not against Aurora Police Department. I'd rather work with you all. But, you know, there's, you know, issues for me speaking up and all that, and that's okay. You know, I'm just trying to speak up and do the right thing, and I would just like to work with y'all so I can continue to do these events and continue to help these kids. You know, that's a real big issue when they're attacking the kids. I've been here on a number of occasions, speaking on a lot of different issues, a lot that I was being attacked, and it's always met on deaf ears. I've never approached and, you know, with, you know, anyone trying to remedy the situation. So that's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
That was the last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Committee reports. Chairwoman Patty Smith, can you give the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee report?
Sure can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and reviewed the following items, twenty-three dash zero-eight-nine-one, an ordinance amending chapter forty-nine of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by modifying the amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to rezone property located at 316 South La Salle Street from R4, two-family dwelling residents, to R3, one-family dwelling resident.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Item, the next two items are together, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development approving the Prairie Meadows Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R1C, one-family dwelling district, to OS1C, Conservation, Open Space, and Drainage District, OS2C, Open Space and Recreation District, with a conditional use plan development for the property located at the north side of Prairie Street, west of North Kensington Drive. There was a very well-attended public hearing for this item where concerns and questions were addressed. This is currently vacant land, most of it owned by School District 129, the remainder of it by a private owner, both wishing to sell. This is for 74 low-density, maintenance-free ranch homes in the price range of $450 to $460.
Before we continue on, you know, I see staff here at the back of the room. Tracy, would you step up for a second, just to give a little background on the process, how we start? Because, you know, I know someone from the community stepped up and talked about not having full information about it. Talk a little bit about the process and how, regardless of other cities and communities where they may do development, what we, the standard we hold people to here in Aurora.
Should I read the second item in as first?
Sure.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. The second item that goes along with that is 23-0977, a resolution approving the preliminary plan and plot for Prairie Meadows subdivision located at the north side of Prairie Street, west of North Kingsway Drive.
So, our process is, they get their entitlements with a preliminary plan first, and then they have to come back with final plan and final plat. So, at that-
Just to be clear, where are we at now?
We are, right now, we're in the entitlement and preliminary. Right. So, we're, right now, what you are approving tonight is the entitlement for the zoning, as well as the preliminary plan and the preliminary plat. Then, they will have to come back again through final plat and final plan stage, where they will get final engineering and everything. We did start looking at final, or engineering, as well as they did do a traffic study that did show that there is really no impact to any of the surrounding properties in this location. They are looking to do some fee-in lieu of improvements for Prairie Street, because we are not ready to really figure out what Prairie Street is going to be. This is going to be more of a regional traffic improvement. So, they are paying us a fee in lieu of for any of those improvements that they would normally construct, if that makes sense.
And just to be clear, along this process that we go through in the city of Aurora, how do we hold developers responsible to ensure that we have the best quality housing here in the city of Aurora?
Yeah. So, I mean, we have been looking at their building elevations. We make sure that they provide us with what exactly they are going to do. It's all outlined in the plan description of that. You guys will, again, see the building elevations at final plan and plat time, so you will have any, you'll be able to comment on any of their elevations. We, again, have to meet the King County stormwater ordinance, so that they will make sure that they are not impacting any of the properties, not only in their neighborhood, but on the south side of their neighborhood in the unincorporated things. We have had several meetings with King County to talk about the unincorporated area and any of those traffic, or, I'm sorry, those stormwater impacts that would be.
And as far as elevations, you go so far as actually looking at the exact materials that they're going to use?
We do. We do.
Any questions from the Alderman?
Consent and consent.
Alderman Lash.
Sure. Just a question, as far as, has Lennar built any other development projects here in Aurora or Illinois?
They have. They actually built Liberty Meadows, which is a townhouse subdivision on the east side off of Liberty Street, I believe, and I will have them correct me if I'm wrong, but it is the second top grossing subdivision that they have in their specs right now.
This one is St. Charles, too, right? St. Charles or out in that area?
I believe so. And I think they have several others, too.
Any other questions?
I have about five. Is this going to use union labor to build these residential homes?
I don't think that that's the scope for what we're doing.
We don't contract with our trades directly, and as far as it, from what I understand, it's a mixture of union and non-union. I'd have to get back to you with the specifics on that.
And then, what energy efficiency standards-
Just to be clear, there is no, in this particular case, based on the location, there is an incentive directly from the city. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge.
So, there's no requirement that we would have based on not having incentives that we would hold you to any standard at all, other than doing the minimum that our ordinances-
Not to my knowledge.
Next question.
What will be the energy efficiency standard used for these residential units? Will they be LEED, Energy Star rating, or just using basic building code as required by Illinois?
It's, so, I understand there's a big change to the energy code coming out next year, and we are going to be fully compliant with that.
Okay, nothing above that?
I'll have to get back to you with specifics on that.
Okay. And then, there is-
Then, to answer the question, we'll still formally submit all of our building plans for the city to review, and if there's any questions on that, that's when we would address those items.
Okay. And then, what is the plan for construction traffic? I spoke with one resident-
Okay, you have a question. What's your plan for construction question?
I'm sorry, was it-
Construction, what's your plan for the traffic during construction?
That actually is in the package.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but he don't-
So, the main entrance will be off of Prairie, and the remaining two entrances will be constructed as part of the land development, and we're going to do everything we can to maintain construction traffic just through Prairie, not allowing any construction traffic through the surrounding neighborhood.
Next question.
Is this the same Lennar builders that has a one-star rating on the Better Business Bureau?
I can't speak to what the Better Business Bureau's rating is. I'm not sure to answer that question.
And then, just with respect to our own oversight, Mr. Mayor, one thing I didn't hear was, I mean, I'm pretty sure that we go through regular, routine inspections, making sure that we have the staff to oversee this.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Consent and consent.
All right, no objections. I'm going to-
Unfinished.
All right, this item, go on, finish.
Item numbered-
I'm sorry, this was, this was, which one?
The first item, please.
First item unfinished, the other one unfinished.
230976.
All right. There we go. 230979, go ahead. The rest went on consent. Next item.
And the second one on consent. Okay. Last item for BZNE is 23-1005, an ordinance changing the name of Molter Road to Deal Road, located between Felton Road and County Line Road. Evidently, this was a long time coming, and it's just something that was more of a paperwork thing that's been going on for a while. No addresses are actually being changed, they're just changing the name of the road.
Alderman Buck?
Thank you. Did Tracy just leave? I tried to stop her. Yeah, this got initiated from King County. So, of course, there is Molter Road that continues on in King County. So, can you kind of just give us background, explain-
Sure.
-the situation? Thank you.
Sure. I got it. Ed Seeburn, City of Aurora zoning director. So, we got notification from King County GIS last week that the, only the small, little King County portion was never formally dedicated. The DuPage portion that you're referring to, from the DuPage County line all the way to Weola Road, that's all been, that's all been fine. That's been dedicated previously by the city with the name change.
Right.
So, this is to clean up the little section from Felton to the DuPage County line.
Okay. So, that portion in King County will be Deal Road-
Correct.
-and the rest of DuPage County.
As it's already been addressed and everything, there's a couple of, O' Cedar, for example, has a deal address in King County there already. It's all good. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Consent. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have for BZNE.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Chairman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on December 14th, 2023, and reviewed the following items. 23-0788, a resolution authorizing the Third Amendment to the Second amended and restated between wholesome, formerly known as Lafarge aggregates, in the city of Aurora. And this is an extension to the contract and ought to allow for state regulatory approval of a new, more cost-efficient method of lime storage.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
I want to read a few here. 09, 23-0973, and a number of other ones, because they all are related, and then we could have somebody from the Department of Development talk about this. 230973, an ordinance making minor amendments to the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan and project for the city of Aurora West Farnsworth Tax Increment Financing District Number Seven. And then, we're going to jump to 23-1006, an ordinance approving a First Amendment to the city of Aurora West Farnsworth Tax Increment Financing District Number Seven Redevelopment Project Area Plan and Project. 231007, an ordinance designating the city of Aurora West Farnsworth Tax Increment Financing District Number Seven amended redevelopment project area. 231008, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the city of Aurora West Farnsworth Tax Increment Financing District Number Seven amended redevelopment project area. 23-1009, an ordinance approving the city of Aurora Farnsworth Bilter Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan and Project. And 23-0110, an ordinance designating the city of Aurora Farnsworth Bilter Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area. And lastly, 23-1011, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the city of Aurora Farnsworth Bilter Tax Increment Financing District.
Consent times seven.
Trevor, did you want to talk about this at all? Do you want to give a-
Based on anything read, do any of the Alderman have any questions on any of the items?
No questions. I'd like to ask that we put 230973 and the others read by Alderman Franco unfinished. I'll be voting no one knows. Do you need me to read off the numbers?
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, I believe that some of these items are going to be assigned to different city council meetings. Mr. Dick, can you kind of give an example of which ones are going to which committee, or, excuse me, which city council meetings, and then, based on Alderman Lash's request, which ones would be at consent and which would not?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Veenstra. Trevor Dick, Assistant Director, Mayor's Office of Economic Development. You're exactly right. There's some state statutes that we're following for the approval of these documents. There's a 14-day window that we have to be passed before we can actually vote on the approval of these after the public hearing that we had last Tuesday. So, we're going to be bringing these to the first meeting on January 19th. And I'm trying to scramble here as I figure out which agenda items. On January 19th, there will be items brought before-
The 19th or the 19th?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Veenstra. January 9th, thank you very much. There will be ordinances brought forward for the minor amendment to the First Amendment to the existing TIF district, so that is 230973. We'll also be bringing the ordinance for the First Amendment to the existing TIF district. So, those are the ones, 231006 through 1008. The process that we follow, as we've done for all the microtifs, is we first come through, pull out the microtif, approve that, and then, the following meeting, we actually approve the creation of the brand-new TIF district. In this case, would be the Farnsworth Bilter TIF district. So, that would be then-
Then, Mr. Dick, with respect to those items, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, are those items basically removing the territory from the existing TIF district? Are you comfortable with those being at consent on the 9th? The establishment of the new TIF district would be considered two weeks later.
No, I would like to keep those on unfinished. Thank you. For that, so that is moving them to the 9th for the full city council meeting?
What would happen on the 9th would be the city council's consideration of the three items that Mr. Dick just described that discuss removal of territory from the existing TIF district. And I think the request, then, is unfinished for those items.
Unfinished for those items?
It will be those three with the additional First Amendment, which is the first item.
And the three that'll go on the next city council meeting?
Yes. Those are 231009, 1010, and 1011.
And I expect that they're going to mostly put those on unfinished.
Consent.
Correct. Unfinished. And then, what day is that going to council?
The 23rd.
The second meeting in January, so that should be 23rd?
23rd.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. So, all those items that Chairman Franco read will all go on unfinished. Of course, different days based on what Mr. Dick read. Next item.
All right, moving on. 23-0983, a resolution authorizing execution of the First Amendment to agreement between the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, the city of Aurora, and the Quad County Urban League. This is an extension and funding for research study to determine whether workforce programs at the FCC provide clients with their stated financial-
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-0993, a resolution authorizing director of purchasing to enter in a managed services agreement for a public safety and municipal radio system from L3 Harris Corporation, Lynchburg, Virginia, for an agreement amount of $15,900,000 over 10 years.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Okay. Next one is 23-0995, a resolution authorizing purchase of property, boiler machinery, fine arts, cyber and excess cyber liability, crime, special events liability, drone liability, general liability, law enforcement auto liability, excess liability, excess workers' compensation, and liquor liability insurance policies for the period of December 31st, 2023, through December 31st, 2024.
Consent.
Our broker hub, International, recommended these various casualty company policies, and due to the market conditions, the premiums have significantly increased, which will cost $335,906 above the previous contracts. And again, that's due to market conditions.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-0996, a resolution authorizing a one-year extension of an agreement with Vision MIA LLC for the government affairs consulting services of Bucala Bello.
Consent.
And this is a 3.5% increase.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
23-0997, resolution authorizing a one-year extension of an agreement with Roger C. Markwart and Company for the government affairs consulting services of Scott Markwart. This is also a 3.5% increase.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-1001, a resolution authorizing payments to the Testing for Public Safety LLC, doing business as IPSB, as a provider of services for 2023 fire department promotional testing process.
Consent.
And this is to pay $63,350, which was used to test 62 public safety employees.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-1014, resolution authorizing director of purchasing to enter into an enterprise service agreement with Selectron Technologies for multiple interactive voice response systems.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Next one, and I'm going to read two of these, because they're kind of interrelated. 23-1016, a resolution to accept a contract with Wireframe Studio Incorporated to lease two installations for Aurora's October 2024 Public Art Festival. And 23-1027, a resolution to accept a contract with Creos Experts Conceals Incorporated to lease Sonic Runway, an installation for Aurora's October 2024 Public Light Art Festival.
Consent.
And these art installations will be paid for by a grant from the DCEO.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry. Alderman Bate?
Can we please have a presentation?
Who from staff can talk about this to the-
Chair.
All right. Go ahead, Jen, you want to give a-
Jen Byrne, Director of Public Art. Thank you, Alderman Bate. Just a quick overview of this festival. If we skip to the next slide, we have a, we have a brief video showing what some of these projects look like. Okay. So, these include the three projects that are included in these contracts that we're talking about right now, as well as a couple of projects that we're looking at that are samples.
Talk a little bit about the project in general until we get the video back.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the, there will be two elements to the festival. October 4th through November 1st, those are both first Fridays, we will have these, what I'm calling anchor installations. So, the Sonic Runway will run the entire length of Water Street Mall. The exposure will be three giant spheres that are interactive and lighted that will be on the lawn across from City Hall. And the other contract in question this evening- And the other contract in question this evening is four units that will be kind of fake street lamps that will record shadows and play them back. If we can see it on the video, it'll explain it a lot better. And this is the shadowing. This is a sample of interactive projection mapping. So as guests step onto the imagery and it moves. This is another project called the Pool that we're looking in a contract for. This is another example of what a three-day installation would look like. This here is the Sonic Runway that we're talking about tonight. And again, this will be 400 feet long going down all of Water Street. None on Indigenous People Day weekend. For those three evenings, we will have a festival stage, beer garden, food vendors, additional installations, and quite a few family activities that are all interactive light art related. This is a projection mapping. So we will have two to three projection mapping projects that three-day weekend, as well as different kinds of light-based performers. And this is the exposure project that we looked at tonight. So people can interact with that using flashlights and lighted toys. So just another example of different lighted, interactive installations. And finally, another illustration of this shadowing project.
Questions? Alderman Bate?
This looks great. Very, very exciting project. Thank you for bringing it to Aurora.
I think it's pretty cool. I think that's going to draw a lot of people to downtown, so thanks for bringing it. Are we promoting this on social media prior to its coming, I'm assuming?
We'll promote it, of course. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. With no objections, I'm going to say.
All right, both items, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think there's one more here that's... Okay, 23... Oh, I guess I got three more. 23-1019, a resolution authorizing director of purchasing to execute a three-year agreement between the City of Aurora and the Pipes and Drums of the Aurora Police and Illinois Not-for-Proper Corporation.
Consent.
This will allow for funding of expenses such as instrument maintenance, repair, and travel expenses historically incurred by the members.
No objections, I'm going to say.
23-1025, a resolution superseding all previous resolutions pertaining to and amending salary and benefit plans for employees in the non-exempt pay plan, and this is a 3.5% increase.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
And the last one is 23-1026, a resolution superseding all previous resolutions pertaining to and amending salary and benefit plans for employees in the executive pay plan. And again, this is a 3.5% increase.
Consent.
Unfinished.
Unfinished.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next committee report. Chairman Mike Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee met on December 12th, 2023. The first item is 23-0985, a resolution authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund, Inc., the CFE Fund, and the City of Aurora for the Aurora Financial Empowerment Center, Aurora FEC, to continue an FEC expert partner until October 31st, 2025. This is amendment to extend the contract that we currently have. This time it's until October 31st, 2025. They currently have 2,576 clients, and they are doing a good job to helping people to reduce their debt and increase their credit scores, and eventually, hopefully, the goal is to also afford houses.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Okay. And the next one is 23-0992, a resolution maintaining the maximum number of classified city of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially due application from JAS Bar and Grill, Inc., DBA AC's Pub at 2124 West Kalina Boulevard. This is in Ward 5. We have new ownership for this establishment. It's a 100% owner change, which is the reason why we need to do this. And it's currently, the new owner is the current owner of Aurora Tap House, and he will keep the name for one year only. And then currently, when he opens, or as he's opening now, it'll be longer hours, opening every day, that'll be offering lunch, and also carry out and deliver.
Consent.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
Consent, okay. And that's the report from PHS and T-Mare.
Thank you, sir. Chairman McGarz, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report?
Yes, Mayor. We met on December 11th. The first item is 23-0898, a resolution authorizing a professional service agreement with the Integraf Corporation, ExaHan of Madison, Alabama, for a computer aid dispatch CAD, resident administrator RSA, and a contract amount not to exceed $204,587.00.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to say.
That concludes the meeting, Mayor. We have only one item today.
Chairman Ron Werman, can you give the Rules Administration and Procedure Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules Administration and Procedure Committee met on December 5th, 2023, and reviewed the following item, 22-0211, an ordinance creating Section 2-65 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to Aldermanic Initiative Funds.
Unfinished. Unfinished.
Do you have a presentation on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that I would just do the presentation at this point, that the council not take any action or deliberate on it at all, and merely move this to COW next week, which, excuse me, on January 2nd, which would be a much abbreviated meeting. It would allow the committee more time to discuss this and potential amendments to it.
All right. So just to be clear, this isn't going forward to city council, going forward to another COW meeting on what day?
Would be on January 2nd. So no action or deliberation occurred tonight. I just would like to introduce it and then give the committee about two weeks to take a look at it and mull it over before it takes it up again.
Do we need to put it on hold, then? Is that officially?
It would effectively remain here. So no formal action would need to happen other than the presentation, which I think I can queue up.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, what date in January?
January 2nd. It would be the first Tuesday in January, which would be the regularly scheduled COW meeting.
All right.
Because we've had at least some of the standing committees canceled this week, it's going to be a relatively light agenda.
All right, thank you. Set a clarification.
Let's just start 22-0211 is, is a proposed amendment to the city code inserting new Chapter 265 of the Code of Ordinances, which would address and provide some additional provisions dealing with the Aldermanic Funds, which are commonly called Ward Funds, even though the aldermen at large also are able to participate in the process. To provide a little bit of background, some of the history here is the Ward Fund process really began in 1993 with the opening of the Howley Wood Casino. At that point, the city began, as a result of the casino locating in the city, began to collect gaming taxes for the first time. A few years later, the city council took a look at those gaming taxes and decided there could be a good opportunity to put some of those funds back into the individual wards at the direction of the aldermen, effectively in the form of what might today be called micro grants or things of that nature, things that individual aldermen would see as part of their daily routine as an alderman, as being necessary and appropriate to do on an infrastructure basis within that ward. In those first two years, those allocations in the eight wards, we only had eight wards at that point, were $400,000 and $200,000 a year respectively. Beginning then in 2000, that's really when you saw the city council begin to create specific ward project funds for each ward that became part of its budget. That's when you really began to see accounting purposes having everything kind of segregated and set up. In 2006, the aldermen at large were able to participate in this process. $40,000 was allocated for its use. And then 2009 is where you saw $75,000 budgeted for each ward alderman's project funds. 2009 is also significant because that's where we first start to see what has kind of begun to be accepted as the two-thirds, one-third rule, where of the $75,000 allotment, $25,000 is designed for non-capital projects, things like grants and other purposes, programming within the ward, and $50,000 would be set aside essentially for bricks-and-mortar type Then, the next major change that we saw was in 2015, where the office committee, which in many ways was an informal predecessor to today's RAP committee, issued a policy basically taking the 2009 two-thirds, one-third rule and adopting it essentially as policy and as semi-official guidelines for the aldermen to follow. That's not an official act of the city council, it's not an official act of the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee, but it really was the process that staff has been using since that time to guide the process and take the aldermen's desires and requests and find ways to bring them into execution. What we would look at in terms of, you know, what is generally a well-received, great program, still has some shortfalls that this ordinance is looking to potentially address. As I just mentioned, we haven't had any formal city council action adopting policies that discuss how and when Aldermanic Funds can be used. In Illinois, individual aldermen, effectively our legislators, and don't possess individual authority to authorize or make disbursements of public funds. The power that the aldermen have is exercised when the city council is convened with quorum and acts are taken as the full city council. So it's a little bit unusual, actually very unusual in Illinois to have the setup that we do with these programs. The program relies on city staff very heavily, who are not under Aldermanic control to monitor expenditures and process disbursements. Again, when we do that, we're following as best we can the 2015 policy. And that two-thirds, one-third rule, as it exists right now, is very difficult to monitor. You don't know, as the year is going on, how much two-thirds or one-third is, because you're not entirely sure what is being spent until essentially at the end of the year, because it all goes into one account for each of the aldermen. So what we were looking at then for the goals of this ordinance, again, is try to take what we have on the books right now and codify it as much as possible, maintaining as many of the existing traditions and practices as possible. We also wanted to look to provide a framework for how to deal with these disbursements, when the requests were submitted, and what time we would be able to process it in the past. Some requests for funding have come in very late, and sometimes those are very difficult to turn around, and occasionally they've come after the cart is ready, the cart's already before the horse in some cases. We also want to make sure that the RAP committee has some ability to review some out-of-the-box types of funding, but also really allow the aldermen greater discretion for certain types of projects to move forward without having to have any additional review. We also wanted to look at kind of tying in some of the existing statutory and ordinance limitations with respect to the administration of the program, whether it be ethics ordinance and other policies that generally guide how public funds can be spent. So what this ordinance looks at doing is provides for two different types of initiative funding. You have capital funds, which are going to be evenly split amongst the ward aldermen, so you basically have one pot that would be split 10 different ways, and that's going to be focused on infrastructure and bricks-and-mortar type projects. And the non-capital funds, which would be evenly split amongst all the aldermen, so that would be another pot that would be split 12 ways, and in there, the aldermen would have greater discretion to expend those funds, provided they still serve a public purpose. Some of the restrictions that we were looking at, we've enumerated purposes for the easy dispersal of non-capital funds. The RAP committee gets to take a look at some of the out-of-the-box expenditures, and we have adopted Illinois law and the city's ethics ordinance with respect to certain limitations on the expenditure of funds. We've tried to provide some operational clarity, discussing disbursement request procedures, how you carry over funds from year to year, and to apply the city's purchasing ordinance with respect to any procurements for initiative funds. We would feel that upon adoption, there'd be greater transparency and clarity as to the process. There would be flexibility for the aldermen to use their funds a little bit more openly without having to come to city council, as is the case right now. You would not have, hopefully, ad-hoc or inconsistent decisions as to expenditures. There would be rules that would apply to aldermen equally, and reduce the potential that one alderman's request may be treated differently than another's. So what's been going on so far? From October 17th through December 2nd, RAP has deliberated on the proposed ordinance. The committee has recommended two changes to the language that was adopted. It eliminates language that would have required alderpersons to encumber, carry over ward funds, or risk possible loss of control of those funds when they were appropriated before 2023. Several aldermen have been carrying funds through their fiscal responsibility for several years, and this amendment ensures that those funds are still available to the alderman or their alderman's successor to be used in a ward at the alderman's discretion going forward. And it also allows for broader use of funds for scholarship programs when the programs are specifically authorized by the committee. Committee also, and at that point, the committee recommended approvals, the ordinance is amended. So where does that leave us right now? You know, we would ask that the COW deliberate on the proposed ordinance and consider whether and how the... One of the things that we, the RAP committee, didn't get to was something that we had recommended early on, is figuring out a process for whether you call it appeals, whether you call it for review, some mechanism to have decisions reviewed by the RAP committee. Again, there's a lot of responsibility placed on staff to interpret the ordinance. That's not necessarily a situation that staff wants to be in all the time, and having the RAP committee essentially sitting as a body to basically determine how to interpret the ordinance and what additional rules may apply, we should look at definitely considering at the next COW meeting. Consider whether or not there's areas of the ordinance that could be further refined or improved, whether or not there should be additional restrictions on non-capital funds, whether there should be fewer restrictions on non-capital fund use, and whether the rules that we've kind of set forth are either too strong or too lax.
Ask a question, counsel. So if we're, we don't have any meetings between now and the 2nd of January, when would they have, would the aldermen have an opportunity to deliberate and communicate amongst themselves and debate amongst themselves about any changes they want to make?
Well, the debate wouldn't need to occur, and the debate still can occur on the 2nd. If it's a matter of alderpersons wanting to reach out to the law department to have amendments drafted or to talk through some of the concepts, we're available, obviously, through the end of the year into the 2nd. We would like to, if there is substantive changes that the aldermen would like, we would like to have the opportunity to try to reduce that to writing as much as possible, so there's something tangible for COW to look at on the 2nd. If this matter passes through COW and is referred to the city council on the 9th, I would expect it would probably go as unfinished business. City council on the 9th can also sit and deliberate on this as well at that point. So there's at least two times right now, without extending any further deadlines or any further, process any further for those amendments and those deliberations to occur in an open meeting. However, there is nothing that would prevent individual aldermen from talking amongst themselves, provided that majority of the quorum are not doing it simultaneously, to discuss whether or not there are issues with the ordinance that they'd like to see addressed.
But given the fact that this is an issue that primarily involves the aldermen and the alderman's office, and how they use their ward funds, alderman funds, the administration or other portions of the city aren't involved in it. I know accounting is, because we have to make determination, have checks and balance of how this money is spent, if it's been appropriately. But I expect, based on the fact that Alderman Smith immediately looked to put this on unfinished, that there is some outstanding issues that have not been addressed. Can I?
Not necessarily. As we sat in the RAP committee, we pushed it forward five to zero because we know that there were some issues, or situations, not issues, of things that aldermen do that the five of us were not a part of, so it was hard for us to have conversation and make decisions on things that we don't do when our ward, because our wards are very specific to our specific, you know, the residents of our ward. So we wanted to move it forward so that we could get input from those who do these other types of programs to be able to move this actually to its next step. So I can't make decisions and/or have input on something that I don't do, that I don't have a part of. And I think that was how the RAP committee in general felt. We needed input from those who are doing different programs, and the five of us were very similar in what we do.
Chairman Werman.
I just want to add on to what Alderman Smith said and then make a few points of what Attorney Beanstra had said. We started... We started this on October 17, and out of the gate, I knew we weren't going to come up with something perfect that all five of us were going to agree on, and I had the zero confidence that what we put forward, the other Aldermen were going to agree on it as well, too. So my decision and the folks on the committee agreed that we'll get something close that we all agree on and what we felt comfortable with, knowing that there were going to be things that, especially as Alderman at Large, you know, having capital funds, that's really nothing... I don't deal with that, so I don't know what that means. And scholarships are another big thing, that we wanted to push something forward, have that discussion, you know, as a committee, because I think the individual conversations alone may be nice, but I can talk with Alderman Seville, and then I'm going to talk with Alderman Tolliver, and it's just going to kind of get kind of crazy. So I felt it was best, and I think it works out great, to have this January 2nd. I'm assuming it's going to be a light agenda, that we can all just kind of say what we feel and come up with something that works for everybody. And I don't think it'll be perfect, which is why we can do amendments if need be, but I think it's important that we get something codified and then we can move forward with this through 2024, because I think personally, as it sets now, I just think we're doing the citizens, not doing what we're supposed to do to protect the money that the city has, because at the end of the day, I told everybody, it's not our money, it's the city's money, and we need to make sure that we spend it wisely.
So it sounds like we've got the next two weeks for the Aldermen that are not on the RAP Committee to review in detail what has been moved to COW. If any Aldermen not on the RAP Committee that haven't already seen it, and those on the RAP Committee as well, have any amendments that they wish, they can reach out to the Law Department, and we will have intense or deeper, more thorough discussion on the 2nd, as the light committee will spend most of our time that day talking about the mechanics of this new ordinance.
Exactly. Yep, that is correct.
All right.
With that being said, that concludes Rules Administration and Procedures Committee.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes committee reports. There is no new business. We are in need of a closed session under Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline for performance or dismissal of specific employees, independent contractors, volunteers, or legal counsel for a public body. Do I have a motion to enter the closed session? And thereafter, adjourn the committee of the whole with no further action. There's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. A special City Council meeting will be held immediately upon adjournment of the COW meeting, which will include closed session. So at this point...
Roll call to go into closed session.
There's going to be a roll call to go into closed session. Madam Parker, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas? Sorry. Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Werman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned. We'll go into closed session, and right immediately following, we will have a City Council meeting where the public will be invited back in.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the record, that is a 2C1 closed session that we just voted on.
Correct.
Is it we have a couple minutes?
Yes.